The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good morning. And let's see, what is today? It's Thursday, I know. May 22nd? Might as well be July. It's gonna be early anyway. No, I'm kidding. April 22nd at approximately 10:05 a.m. and it is Thursday, April 22nd. And before we bring the meeting to order, we were privileged to have in our presence today the Director of CSB, Mr. Randy Muth. And this is Childhood Prevention Month. And we have a certificate here for you, Randy, and your staff, but I'd first like you to come up and make some opening remarks, please.
I haven't been able to see anybody. Yeah, because you can't see anybody.
Sure, absolutely.
Randy, how are you?
Good. Thank you, Commissioners.
You can take that off.
As you know, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And this is something that's pretty important to CSBs across the country. Certainly something we take seriously, Mahoning County. Normally, we do a lot of events. We usually have a luncheon. We plant pinwheels that symbolize all the time somebody called to help us prevent child abuse or respond to an allegation of child abuse and neglect. We do a number of outreach activities over the month throughout the county. We were able to do almost nothing last year because the pandemic had just started. This year, we're doing a little bit more, but the person who really spearheads all of our efforts is Jennifer Kohler, our Public Information Officer. And she is the expert on Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I'll turn it over to her, if that's okay.
Jennifer, please. It's good to see you, too.
Well, I thank you for the opportunity to... Thank you also for recognizing us and your ongoing support and commitment to our team. I'm very proud of the team that I work on behalf of. While they're busy working with children and families in some of the most dire situations in our county, I have the privilege of trying to educate our community about the great work that they are doing and how important it is for our community to know the warning signs and how people can prevent child abuse in their own backyard. So one of the things I try to educate during this month, National Child Abuse Prevention Month, is that the best defense against child abuse is a vigilant community. And we really rely on our community. You guys are our eyes, our ears. We can't do anything unless we get a report. So one of the things we're trying to do is let people know, don't be afraid to call Children's Services. Know the warning signs. We print all kinds of information on our website. So anyway, during this month, it's one of the biggest ones in Child Welfare and Child Protective Services, is just reminding people how important it is that if you see something, say something. If you see something suspicious, go with your gut. Call your Child Protective Services Agency or local law enforcement. So that's the biggest message that we want to get out is you don't have to be afraid to call, but you can make all the difference in the life of a child. Because children, especially young children, cannot report child abuse. So just wanted to thank you again for the opportunity. And we are glad to have a vigilant community. We do get those reports. So people are listening.
Can I ask, Jennifer, one of the things that I heard throughout the pandemic was the problem that we were having with child abuse was the fact that kids aren't going in schools. And the teachers are the ones that notice the most and that bring attention to a lot of child abuse that went unnoticed because now, you know, kids weren't in the classroom and, you know. And so is that something that you think is evolving because more schools are opening up and things of that nature?
Right. When the pandemic first hit back in March and April, we had the stay-at-home order. All of a sudden, we had this like shift to remote learning and nobody had any experience doing. So that was a crisis in and of itself, just to, you know, make that big transition for these school systems. So we saw, and Randy can verify this, I believe, a 50% drop in the reports from our communities. And this wasn't just in our county. It was within all the 88 counties in Ohio. That was significant. I mean, all of a sudden, the phone stops ringing because all of those mandated reporters, the teachers, coaches, counselors, the people that have their eyes on those kids every day, have that relationship with those children that whether they can, you know, you get to know kids, you get to see, you know, do you see something suspicious or marks or bruises on their body? Or sometimes kids come forward and they tell you things. So yes, that was a big, big drop for us. One of the things is Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, who we report to, too, did a lot of awareness campaigns with information that we would share with teachers and, you know, and even our community, just reaching out to families when they were, you know, sheltered up in their home, you know, make calls, check on families if you think could be possibly in crisis. So we did a lot of that type of messaging. But I think as the schools are opening up, now we're starting to see our numbers move towards some of the more regular reports that we would normally see in the ranges.
Do you see... And I've reported some issues last year, and we haven't had anything since. But that's because, like you said, nothing's open. When you have the schools and some of the guidance counselors and some of the teachers have targets. I mean, like people that they know, children that they know that are in these environments. Is there a way that Children's Services could do like spot checks? I mean, like say I'm in a school and I'm a guidance counselor and I know four or five of my students in this school are having issues, had issues. But when you're not there, you have no clue. Do they... Is there a way you guys did spot checks to see? Like if somebody, one of the teachers that's on the Zoom calls and says, "I've had, this person has not been on for like a week." Is there a way you could spot check those? I mean, the only reason I ask is because it is difficult. I feel bad for the kids because school is a salvation. And that's not only here in Youngstown, Mahoning County. It's all over. I mean, they have to go to school. They eat there. Their main day is there. So is there a way that you could get names from schools?
Absolutely, Commissioner Ragetti. So I will say that shortly after the pandemic started, the Ohio Department of Education took this seriously and they've done a pretty good job. They know that children learn best when they're safe and protected. So they immediately transitioned to providing guidance to schoolteachers on how to recognize the signs of abuse and neglect through a virtual platform. And they did that in partnership with Children's Services and with the Juvenile Court through Judge Delick's Early Warning System. So what you pointed out is exactly what Judge Delick's Early Warning System is designed to do that started well before the pandemic. And we got a lot of experience working together with school counselors, the Juvenile Court teachers, and school resource officers. And we've continued at Children's Services to host the School Resource Officers Monthly Meeting. Every other month or so, we meet with them as well. And we have seen that the virtual... There's been some change, but we haven't seen a total stoppage of that communication and collaboration just because we're in a virtual platform. We've actually done exactly what you said. Before cases get to that level of child abuse and neglect, Judge Delick's vision is that we should work as a team, education, school resource, law enforcement, Children's Services to prevent it from arising. And we've been able to do that with remarkable success even through the pandemic.
And that's the best news Mahoning County can hear today is you're on it. You have a great department. You work very well with other departments as a team. That teamwork is what's gonna keep... I mean, Mahoning County is just noted for their team. So thank you for all you do. I don't know that... I doubt if I could work there. Because I would probably be, I don't know. I'm not even gonna say it.
I don't think she'd follow the guidelines.
No, I wouldn't either.
I'd probably have a house full of kids, but it's all right.
Well, thank you, Commissioners and Jennifer and Randy. We have a certificate here in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month. And also just want to thank you for your efforts. You know, you keep encouraging communities about awareness and prevention. And you've done a great job and want to commend you and your staff for doing that. So Carol and Dave, if you want to come up and we'll present this to Randy and Jennifer.
Randy, we'd like to present this to you for all your hard work, staff, everything that you've done and accomplished over the years, making our community a safer place, a place where our families feel better and safer. So on behalf of the Commissioners, we'd like to present this to you and Jennifer.
Congratulations. God bless your agents.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have a picture?
A lot of them.
Not our feet. We kind of like to waste them.
Okay, no feet.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Okay, Commissioners, I need a motion to approve previous minutes of Board Meeting Number 15 and approval bills for payment. Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, advertisement for bids, number one. And we will go to Mr. Bill Whitaker. Is Bill with us?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I had my video off as I'm getting my internet connection. So yeah, this is for our LKS renovation for the office space for our Service and Support Administrators Department. That department has grown by about a third over the last six and a half years. That with the inclusion of us bringing early intervention BRAC, which, you know, is another 10 to 12 staff that need to be in an office. We've just kind of run out of office space here at the Board by adding additional staff that need to have a workspace. So there's a place at Leonard Kurt School that really has not been used for educational purposes for a couple of decades now due to less enrollment than what was at the school when it was originally built. So because it was not originally set up for office space, we need to do some deconstruction and then some renovation and put some cubicles in there and some offices and some meeting space. So we've been working with GPD Group Architects to design it. And this is now being brought to you so that we can go out to advertisement for public bid.
Very good. Thank you for that update, Bill. Okay, motion?
Motion to approve advertisement for bids, number one.
Second. Roll call. Yes. Yes, journal entry, number one.
Motion to approve journal entry, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes. Yes, travels A through C. And Joe Fortunato, you're gonna do A and B. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Good morning, everyone. I'll try to highlight each of the three items. Request for travel, A, it's to attend to Ohio Association Magistrate Conferences of Ohio Association of Domestic Relations, judge seminars, court management program, all within the state, general, non-general, and continuing education. Item B, domestic relations, is also continuing education, professional development seminars, mental health, domestic violence courses, court supervision, Ohio Judiciary College courses within the state. And this is also general and non-general fund. The final one, C, for domestic relations, is attend Ohio Association, the domestic relation judge is Supreme Court, Ohio Judiciary, conferences, quarterly task force, committee meetings, and advisory for law reform. Again, continuing education. This is non-general.
Thank you, Jim.
Sure.
Motion?
Motion to approve travels, number two, A through C.
Second. Roll call. Yes. Yes, agreements, letters A through E and A and B. Linda?
Good morning, everyone. Agreement A is with the publication Wine Buzz for advertising in their annual June Ohio Wine Month issue. And letter B is an agreement with CTM Media Group, who distributes our travel guide and literature throughout the area. This will be in Northeast Ohio attractions such as the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, the Pro Football Hall of Fame, those types of attractions throughout Amish country, and also an advertisement in their Northeast Ohio Visitors map.
Beautiful. God's country. Gladly. We escaped out of that communist Commonwealth.
My goodness, David.
Pay no attention.
Thanks, Linda. Mr. Janetti. Good morning, sir.
Letter C is an agreement with TSI Western Stars for repairs to vehicle number 61. Estimated amount of $1,504.51. These are non-general funds. And letter D is an agreement with Mastermind LLC. This is for pavement marking inventory. The amount is $48,363.15. These are non-general funds and 90% ODOT reimbursement.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff, I think I saw Joe Iberus. There he is. Good morning, Joe.
Morning, everyone. E is an agreement with Clavon Ford out of Warren for a repair on a 2014 SUV Ford Police Interceptor and the estimated amount of $1,348.63. And that's a non-general.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners?
Approval... Motion to approve number three agreements, A through E.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner Chafficant.
Yes. Okay, appointments. Pointing and updating the following individuals to serve the Mahoning County Corrections Planning Board effective immediately until December 31st, 2022. We have Chief Carl Davis, the new Youngstown Police Chief. We have Malina Vath, Youngstown probation. And Mary Ann Kachalko, Director of Workforce Development Board. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve number four, appointments, A.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner medio Agati.
Yes. Resolutions?
Motion to approve resolutions, number one, additions.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes.
Commissioner medio Agati.
Yes, resolutions, A through F. Audrey?
Yeah, you want me to explain the... Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. As you're aware, you know, back in 2015, we were mandated to start getting out of direct services. And we had transitioned the Michelle facility a couple of years ago. And we've been continuing to provide services at Javits. We only have a couple of years left that we are allowed to be a provider. So we felt it was time to transition that building to another provider. So this is an RFQ to go out so that providers can give us their proposals to take over services. We wanted to give a little bit of time in case the provider that is chosen, that there's any issues or concerns, we would have time to get another provider in there before the mandate was up in which we were no longer to provide services at all. So we just feel it's time to put this RFQ out and it's expected that the new provider would take over services, 1-1 of 2022.
Yep, very sad.
Very sad.
Yes, very sad.
Pat?
Commissioners, letter B is a resolution approving a moral obligation payment of $808.41 to Jack Devaney Supply. This was for services rendered to repairs to our tractor truck.
Okay, thank you. O and B?
Morning, Anna.
Morning, Anna.
Letter C is a resolution authorizing the contribution of $10,000 from the Mahoning County General Administration Fund to OSU Extension for the Mahoning County Port H Program. And letter D is a resolution authorizing all the actions necessary to accept an award to Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council for 2021 in the amount of $7,300.
Okay. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Sanitary, Mr. Janetti.
Commissioners, letter E is a resolution to proceed with granting a permanent easement at the Meander Wastewater Treatment Plant to Trumbull County. This is part of infrastructure upgrades related to the Middle Ridge hydraulic improvements. And letter F is a resolution designating Joseph Muccio to serve on the Ohio Public Works Commission District Six Integrating Committee and as Project Manager for all OPWC projects and appointing Lisa Yurcho as the alternate.
Good. Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve number two resolutions, A through F.
Second. Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And for the good of the order, any elected officials or department heads like to comment? Any updates? Is Troy available?
I'm available. Good morning, Commissioners. Not that I'm an elected official, but thank you for the moment. I am Troy Rhodes with Ohio Edison First Energy. Just wanted to attend the call. And if it pleases, I can just provide an update. I know I've talked to a couple of Commissioners. Ohio Edison is in the process through 2021 of doing tree trimming in Mahoning County throughout the service territory. If there's any questions or concerns regarding the trimming, it's on the distribution lines within different municipalities that we'll be working in. So those are basically the lines that are running to places of business and places of residency throughout the county. Other than that, that's all I had to present this morning. Any questions for me?
Troy, I wanted to thank you for meeting me the other day in Poland and taking a ride with me and allowing me to show you what our concerns were as Commissioners in a community. And I just want to thank you for the great job you did explaining to me actually how that whole process works. It's not easy. If I had my way, I would take every tree down. You know how I felt. But I totally have a better understanding what your responsibility is and what the other providers and carriers that are hooked onto those poles, that they have a responsibility as well as the government's. So I want to thank you for taking the time for doing that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, from a utility standpoint, obviously, trees are not the wire's best friends. So I appreciate your comments. But with that being said, as many of us know, we are celebrating Arbor Day today in this month. And one of the things I can say is that Ohio Edison and First Energy is supporting Mill Creek Park and also Camp Stanbach in providing over 400 free trees that could be planted in the community. So we take this seriously as far as trees and Arbor Day. It's just which are the right trees to plant around utility lines. So thank you again.
Thank you, Troy. Don't let those trees be planted underneath no more wires, okay?
Absolutely. We love shrubs and pollinator grass.
That's better. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? No?
Yes, Commissioners. Hi, Audrey Morales.
Hello, Audrey.
Hi, how are you guys? Just an update, we will be starting our Summer Youth and Flyman Program. But I'm not gonna talk a lot about it today because I'm gonna ask permission from Nancy and Audrey to have Lori and Audrey at the next board meeting. And she can talk about that with you. But just wanted to give you heads up of what we're doing at JFS with the Summer Youth Program.
So they... Audrey, so they're gonna continue that program through the pandemic?
Yes, but Lori will be able to touch base because she's been in touch. And I think Jen Pangio from Juvenile Portis on too. And she will talk more about that, the explanation of how Judge Delick and the courts have decided to do this through the COVID, but to keep everyone protected. So I'd like to reserve that so she would be able to explain more in detail.
Very good. Good news.
Okay.
Did Jenna say anything? No? Okay, well, thank you, Audrey.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? No? We have kind of a busy schedule today. Carol, Dave?
No, I know we have... We're slightly late on our 10:30, so I'll reserve that for the elected officials. I just want to say that we were at the Joint Port Authority Meeting yesterday at the Campus of Care. And I'll be quick. And you do have to come out and look at it, Anthony. It is just the most beautiful facility. And to see that back in full swing and getting renovated. We went into Joe Caruso's building after it was all over and went to the gym. Dave, did you see the gym? Oh, my God. Unreal what they did to that Campus of Care. It's just gonna be a top shelf, 100% building for the most underserved individuals. So I'm happy to see that. Was a good meeting with Port Authority and their members, all of their members, as well as Frank Fuda was there virtual... I mean, there and the other two Commissioners were virtual. And that was it. It was very good. Audrey was there. She was there.
That's the most important, Audrey being there. Is it Giovano's? Giovano's? Is that how you pronounce it? I think it's not Giovano.
Gianninos?
Gianninos. Yeah, they opened in their ten pizza shop in the valley, or for them. And I think there's three or four in Mahoning County. They're just opening one in Boardman and they have one in Austattana, one somewhere else.
Sebring.
Sebring.
Well, we ate it there. Had the Austattan taste of the valley, if you remember.
Yeah. Well, they brought pizza and everything for the luncheon. And, you know, you just don't get a good feel for what an amazing group of individuals we have working to assist Mahoning County and the entire valley, Mahoning, Trumbull, Columbia, the entire Mahoning Valley. When you have people like, you know, Ed Moransky and Sam Cavelli and Ron Klingel and Sterling, Rich Edwards, Kathy Dillon, Marty Looney, you know, we've got such a diverse group of expertise, you know, that bring and volunteer their time and services to the Board. You know, they get paid nothing. And to have two individuals representing, you know, this valley, like Sam Cavelli and Ed Moransky, I mean, people that, you know, their successes are huge. I mean, to spend their time donating, their time and efforts to try and create economic development for our valley, to bring new jobs and opportunities, and to also assist in the Campus of Care and to bring opportunities for the developmental disabled. So I mean, Bill Whitaker and Dwayne Picarelli and so many people were there that did an amazing job or that are doing an amazing job and spoke on our behalf and on behalf of the valley and the county. So I really thank all the people that were there. And Anthony and Carol and I are so proud to be part of this, you know. So it was really amazing. I'm happy that everybody got the ability to come in and see it. I apologize for being late this morning. I got tangled up on a phone. You know how one of those things where you answer the phone and you should never do it? You know you should never do it. You end up on the phone for 45 minutes. And it was somebody who, and I'm gonna be calling Audrey soon. It was somebody that, a woman that can't get her child support. And she was giving me all this information and, you know, what a difficult scenario those can turn out to be. And I tried to, you know, get as much information as possible. So then I jump in my car and take off because I'm, you know... Normally, I go to Panera and get bagels on Thursday. And I didn't even get out the door to get here in time, let alone stop anywhere. And I almost don't even want to say this out loud. I'm halfway down 680 and I'm looking, I'm going, jeez, oh, man, I can't see any of the exit signs. I'm looking at these darn exit signs and I'm trying to read this and that. And I'm going, how come this... And I went, oh, my God, I forgot to put my contacts in. Oh, my God. I drove all the way here. I didn't have my contacts in. I mean, I can read fine, but from here, Janetti looks like he has hair, you know. So, I mean, I can't see that far. And I don't know if that's laken there. Is that your daughter next to you? I can't see that far out, you know, but...
Did you go get him, I hope?
No, I was two thirds of the way here. And I was already 15 minutes late. I wasn't gonna turn around and go back home and get my contacts.
Well, there you go, Sheriff. You're gonna have to follow him home.
I was supposed to bring papers that I had to drop off some. I mean, it was like...
Well, Dave, we're just lucky you made it here.
Thank you, Anthony. One piece.
Okay.
Good man.
Absolutely. Them eyes are still working. All right. Well, with that being said, Nancy, when is our next meeting?
Next Thursday. He's right here.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Some of, second. I thought you were gonna say no.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.